In my defense, I put up seven.
Well, you don't have to, because I'll put my time.
Oh, true.
But it's like there was personal thing. It's more for me to try, you know, and for a weekend, I can do that before or something.
Yeah.
We'll come down the same night. Right, right. She's like, I'm in town. Yeah. She's like, who's there taking down? Yeah. And just trying balance.
We are good, nobody online, so you're good.
Thank you. I'd first call this, first meeting of the month of the Member of the Metropolitan City Council to order, and first, I had on the agenda, Michael Walker, yes, first of all. Mr. Engel will not be joining us in any capacity tonight, he will be absent. Agenda addition, agenda approval. Anything to add there moving forward?
I will move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Mark. Move in second to approve the agenda. All pay with that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. Next item is open communications. Does anybody here to speak to anything on the council, to the council about that's not on the agenda, otherwise if there's something on the agenda, just wait till that item comes up and we'll address it then. But is anybody here to speak to any item from the public? If not, then we'll move to the consent agenda. We've got one item, and that was approval of last meeting's council minutes. So, thank you, Paul. Paul Scott. Moving second to approve the consent agenda of one item. All pay with that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing on ordinance submitting, check the 165 zoning regulations, Article 302, definitions and article, or 13li, limited industrial district of the government of ordered ordinances, and yes, we'll start with officially opening the public hearing. We'll start with that. Does anybody here to speak to that? And now it'll be the time, right? Yes. You're gonna use yourself, yes, yeah.
I am Cassie Rice, I'm the executive director of the Wellness Coalition of Rowland County. I'm unfamiliar, basically been here a couple times. I just wanted to let you guys know a little bit about what we have kind of chatted with a few of you the past couple weeks regarding this ordinance. There's been kind of a few questions around the age piece of the ordinance, specifically, would we have somebody standing at the door allowing for carting with an establishment? As Officer Shannon said previously, because of the small stores that we have here, the carting wouldn't necessarily need to take place at the door, it would be done by the retailer, just even if it's that one person working, they would be able to be ID'd that way. The other piece was, why are we treating this maybe different than our liquor stores? Because we don't necessarily have an ordinance that says minors cannot go into a liquor store with any adult. And so that was just another concern that was brought up as well, so something to consider. If we did potentially add in a piece, you guys could talk about that, as far as should we allow a minor to be able to enter that establishment, or should we have verbiage that would say a minor could enter that establishment with an adult? The one thing we would maybe think about is, is a 21-year-old, an adult, and a 20-year-old in that scenario still okay? Something to think about. And then the other piece that they wanted to make sure that we kind of chatted about as well is just making sure that we change some of the verbiage from those under 21 to a state-issued ID for somebody that is 21 or older. So those are kind of some of the conversations we've had, actually multiple people have had and brought to our concerns or to our attention. Chief Shannon, we've chatted a little bit about different ideas around the ordinance, and we still, as a coalition, feel like what you guys have before you is pretty strong and would increase community protective factors and reduce risk factors.
Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak to that item while we have this open as far as public hearing is concerned? Hearing none? Hearing none, no other comments, we'll oppose the public hearing officially, and proceed to F3.
So council, um...
It's like the first reading, okay.
Kind of a two, two player fire, because I didn't do it last time. Number one, a minimum of three votes is needed for the first reading that passed. So that's kind of my first note. The second note is, understand that the ordinance in front of you does not have to be adopted in its entirety, so as you're going through your discussion, you are able to make a motion and add where we remove language from the existing ordinance that would then be cleaned up for the second reading. So just want to clarify that if there are sections of the ordinances that you don't necessarily agree with, you can remove them or modify them when you're making the motion. So, this is the same ordinance that was considered as actually ultimately failed to one.
What is the rule of the council on moving forward on that? The action that's asked for is a motion to approve the first reading and proceed to the second reading, but I think it's time for discussion, any other discussion?
So just to clarify, we're on F3, correct? Correct. So this is merely, this would be amending the zoning regulation, so that's a few things. The first is defines what a smoke shop is, that I would advise against removing that because that doesn't base us. But the next is, once you define smoke shop, it limits smoke shops to the limited industrial district, and then finally, it establishes a thousand-foot perimeter around, basically the new thing where a minor could be present. And then it does refer to the other ordinance that had been tabled, 46.03. So you can theoretically adopt this ordinance, amend 46.03 in, and then go to that, untable it, decide you don't want to be 46.03, and then on the second reading, you would just remove that language before you would adopt it, so. Clear is my day?
Quite.
Okay.
And there was a definition of smoke shops in here somewhere, correct?
This is in this ordinance, yes. And that was the under subsection two.
So discussion on F3, what is the rule of the board as far as moving forward of that? We'll go back to F1.
I guess my concern with it, and I did talk to Cassie this afternoon, and she did mention the, I had a couple concerns going into that conversation, one was the, and she addressed it earlier, but maybe the imperative that these folks hire somebody else just to stand at the door, and with, as she mentioned, the size of them, and it sounds like she just kind of cleared that up.
So, just point of order?
Yes.
So, that...
Oh, that is, that would be the conversation, right? Okay, we'll get to that then. Okay. Moving on.
Sorry?
No, no, good point, and I appreciate it. The limiting to light industrial, in and of itself, I don't have much of a problem with. We've done that for other industries and retail establishments and styles of businesses. When we, but, but my understanding is about the only light industrial I have is on Highway One, kind of near Nails, water conditioning, kind of that, to the railroad tracks. And if you take a bird's eye view of that, you have Elliott Park, you have the swimming pool, you have Davis Park, and so what it feels like we're doing without saying that's what we're doing is outlawing these establishments. Because we're really, if we put that thousand-yard feet, whichever, southern feet, you know, I would have to pull out a map to be exact about it, but it feels like there isn't really much of an opportunity for these businesses to exist with that. And if we want to outlaw businesses, that's one conversation to have, but doing so in this kind of backdoor way doesn't seem all that kosher to me.
So I think, to answer your question, yes, a thousand feet, if you drew a thousand-foot perimeter around Davis Park and Elliott Park alone, we have two pockets of limited industrial for both on the Highway One corridor. The first is basically the four corners of Highway One and the railroad tracks, and then a little bit further to the south where the Yells, and so that is the second, and that's it. So there might be a lot, maybe two, that potentially fall outside of that thousand-foot perimeter, but I'm going to say probably not. The thousand-foot perimeter we just draw on a GIS map, you could theoretically remove the thousand-foot perimeter and just leave it to limited industrial. So you have options.
Chris, remind me, in the bypass plan, isn't some of that...
Limited industrial?
Yes. Okay.
So bypass plan itself discusses business park, the two distinct, some districts.
Okay.
Now, I would tell you, on the bypass plan, just based on conversations I've had in the past, could I hypothetically see limited industrial to the south of the interchange? Yes. But what you see there is basically what you have, is general commercial and business park, and the bypass plan is just an overlay over that, so you still have to work within those guidelines somewhat. But if you look right along Highway One, so a block north of the downtown, there's that kind of odd shaped triangle, that's one pocket, and then the four corners up there where you see the railroad tracks and Highway One, that's the other pocket. So that is the current limited industrial.
So the southernmost pocket, that's Hawkeye Redding Mix?
Schwan's.
Schwan's, all very construction. So even there, you would have escape room?
Yes.
To, to deal with. So I, I'm in agreement with Scott, that it, it's not, I mean, if we want to ban them, ban them, but I don't feel this is really what we want to do. I mean, it, it's, it's a business. You know, we don't all like every business, but...
You could, I mean, you could remove that thousand-foot perimeter, leave the definition of smoke shop, leave the use in the limited industrial, and see, there's a lot of factors that could happen. I think right now, at the state level, there's kind of an anti-sentiment based upon some of the laws that they're passing. That may look in the future, you never know. And if it does, it might change, you know, as a term of due diligence, it might change your outlook depending on the number of businesses that are, but I, the limited industrial makes, represents probably less than five percent of the land mass in the burning, so you could do away with a thousand and just see how it goes.
So Chris, forgive me, I was gone last time, and you talked about this, but how does this affect current businesses? Are they grandfathered in?
So the two that are in the downtown, they'd be grandfathered in.
Okay.
They would be grandfathered into whatever zoning change we may or may not make, but if we were to adopt the minors deal, they would have to follow that.
They would have to comply with that.
Correct.
I would propose striking subsection A, number one, the thousand-foot requirement of any public or private school, college, daycare, et cetera, et cetera. I see trails here, too. And what market bear, what they bear from there, and I fully support that the Wellness could, coalition.
Coalition, yes.
Thank you. Does, you know, I, I was very supportive of the nicotine ban in parks, it's all good things, but there is a balance also to, you know, how we monitor businesses. I, I struggle when we get into government overreach, and I would not be comfortable supporting this with that thousand-foot, because in effect, it is a bait.
And does this take it away out of Main Street, other than the two that are grandfathered in?
Yes. I do want to point out, too, I think that's about a concern, keep in mind that if you read the ordinance, it's a conditional use permit, so it's not even a permitted use within the limited industrial, it's a conditional use, meaning it has to be back to the board adjustment for approval. So there are, there's a certain level of oversight that will happen.
That's a good reminder, thank you.
But to answer your question, yes, no new establishment outside of the limited industrial, and it would have to be subject to a conditional use permit application first.
So is that a move? I seriously was asking for clarification.
Scott, you read my question, because I'm sitting here thinking, I did not make that in the form of a motion, I just said, I would support that. So I will formally move that we adopt changes with the modification of removing subsection A of Smoke Shops 1, proximity to use centers.
And I would second that.
Did you catch the subsection, Marsha, did you get it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all, the details?
Yes, sir.
So clarify, what we're talking about here is passing it as is without the thousand-foot perimeter.
Correct.
Okay.
This is, so this would only change sections two?
That was a second.
That was, yeah.
Did you catch that, Marsha? Scott, second, okay.
So we keep the designated, 165, keep that 302?
Yes, we keep the...
The verbiage?
Yes. Yes, we're only removing that one thousand-foot restriction.
But we're, okay, so.
Yeah, the defin, the definition of a smoke shop does not change. Face on my, my...
Correct. Motion on the floor has moved in second to move forward with the first reading, with this one parameter here. Any other questions, discussion, clarifications?
I have one, not necessarily specific to this, but just procedural, and it might have just been the way you phrased it, Chris, but earlier you said, because this had failed the first time around, you said that it needed three votes for the first reading. I just want to clarify, is that the first reading or is it all readings?
All.
Okay, and just the way it was phrased.
So as an ordinance, if there's only three of you here, all three of you would have to do...
It's not a majority of the council, not a majority of those present. Okay, thank you.
For both ordinance and resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for reminding us about that. So if we are ready to vote on that, I think it is Marsha's.
Yes.
West? Yes. And Jason?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
The resolution passes, the motion passes on that ordinance.
So when you get, at your next meeting, you'll see this ordinance, that one that will be set for the reading. See that?
Thank you.
I will then back to F1, which needs to be untabled, where we're at. Many chapter 46 minors in government ordered ordinances. Am I right there, Chris?
Yes, you have to have the motion.
Untable?
Paul, second. Paul and Scott. I believe that's a void vote.
Correct.
So, a motion on the floor to untable, I have F1, where this 10, 7, 20, 24B, and we understand that vote. All pay with that motion, please say aye to untable?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That item is not untabled, it's open for discussion, and possible first reading.
So the change that I would like to see is section one of the amendment 46 dot zero three, smoke shops, three valid ID required, I would like to change that from valid driver's license to valid government-issued identification. And it could be, and I don't like the fact that we're limiting it to state authority because someone may only have the passport, some federal issued, I just think it's cleaner than a, than a driver's license by a state authority. So I, the language I would use, a valid government-issued ID presenting reasonable likeness to the presenter.
You have the Marsha?
She'll discuss.
On the floor, is there a second?
I do.
Well, I have a motion, yeah, because there may be further discussion that we want to lump into the motion. Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just thinking about what Cassie was saying earlier, about trying to allow the businesses to be able to function with one employee. So I'm wondering if, and again, maybe you guys talked about this last time, but the verbiage states to enter or be on the premises. And I don't know if that's fair, if you've got someone at the register, there's other people in the building, and it's going to be hard for them to prevent someone from entering. However, they can easily prevent the sale because they are at the register, and it would be expected that they would see an ID based on what Paul just said. So I'm just wondering if the verbiage regarding entering is what needs to be edited.
And also, on that same point, the entering, also, I understand that we often spoke to, she said it'd be okay, you know, like if there's persons on the premises, but it does state the person being at each public entrance, so I'm wondering if that needs to be stated, if it's not going to be, you know...
Yeah, one is two.
Yeah, we need to clean that up if we're going to...
Right, it applies to...
I don't want to speak for chief, but I think if you actually were moved to, if they were to enter into a facility and find somebody that was under the age of 21, and as long as the business had posted at the entrance that it is unlawful to be under the twen, under the age of 21, then you could theoretically just hold the individual that violated that versus the business for, I hate to say trespass or whatever, but you could...
It would, yeah, so if there wasn't a specific ordinance that violated that, it would come back to more of a trespass issue, which would involve the business owner wanting to pursue charges for trespassing versus us just saying. It's kind of like the same thing with some of the guns that have, or the businesses that have the gun stickers on, it's up to that business owner to decide whether they want to trespass somebody off of their property or not from that standpoint. As far as the 21 side of it goes, is being in that premise or on that property, bars are generally kind of a target for some of these. Lisbon bars are prohibited to have somebody under the age of 21 in the bar after 10:00 PM, I believe. I'd have to go look back and look and make sure, but after a certain hours because of the nature of the business that it's conducting from that standpoint. This being a retail shop, different aspects from there. I think the bigger thing, the bigger point is, again, stressing that this is a 21-year-old establishment, you can't purchase unless you're 21 anyway, that's kind of our caveat, which I mentioned before, like our true enforcement's going to be compliance checks, different aspects from there, and managing the violations that way.
Because that, that's another concern I have when we, I mean, we have ordinance on the books that are enforced upon complaint.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the staff.
Right.
To go out there and take measurements and monitor things and, and, you know, make sure that there's all these different things that we pass trying to do the right thing, and sometimes, again, we just, we make it harder on ourselves and on our staff. It's kind of ironic because I have a personal experience with this at a place in Seattle. We were walking around, and my minor son, in the shops there, my minor son walks into the shop, and I'm following behind, and it's traditional, old-school head shop, and at the door it said, you know, anyone under, I believe it was 18, must be accompanied by an adult, and my son was in there ahead of me for a good five minutes, and, you know, I had no idea what it was until I got in there. I was kind of like, oh, you know what this is, no? But those are pretty, pretty glass things. But, you know, and it would have been very hard for that shop employee to stop him, you know. I, I think the enforcement mechanism is in place, I think there is already a spotlight on these... I think there is already a spotlight on these establishments that any responsible owner is going to make sure to do the best they can to, you know, do the right thing. And so the changes we're talking about, I feel meet the intent of what we are trying to accomplish.
Thanks for personalizing the decision, Paul.
Sometimes it just helps.
Helps to crystal.
I mean, because as a parent, you know, I mean, there's, sometimes there's value into taking a young person into an establishment and saying, here's why you shouldn't go in here. Here's why you shouldn't purchase these things, you know. And it's a balance. And, you know, if I, as a parent, can back up what Cassie's doing through the schools and what Chief and his officers are doing day-to-day, you know, and granted, not every parent will do that, but every small effort can help. If we stop one person, I feel like it's a win. So after all of that, is striking two and the changes I recommended for three, does that take care of what we want to accomplish?
Remind me when it does.
Or does striking shall be stationed at a public entrance? And you can say an employee, manager, owner shall prohibit any person under the age of 21?
I made that my motion.
Did you do that? Adjusting number two.
Yeah, adjusting to.
Is it doing anything with three?
There would be two adjustments, two and three.
Editing prioritizes.
Yeah. Yeah, striking driver's license issued by a state authority to a valid government-issued ID presenting reasonable likeness.
I will second the motion.
Okay. And did you catch that, Marsh, with this, one change to two and one change to three that we had earlier?
So what are the, and maybe this is spelled out in the state code, but what is the consequence mechanism for somebody letting, an owner letting somebody under 21? They're there for a half hour and one of your guys goes in and now we got a thing. Like what, what is the?
This is, this would fall, chapter 46 is a simple misdemeanor offense. It would be like $105 fine plus cost if they're going to come down through from some, if you have the 21-year-old restriction.
But if the.
To the individual or the business owner?
If we, if the ordinance prohibits the business from doing in there, they could be in violation of that. If it's, depends how that's worded. If it's the business's responsibility or if it's just the minors, they can't be in there unless they're 21 years old, then that would go towards, but again, then you're forcing the business. The business will have to post that, make it clearly aware, different aspects from there too.
So, yeah, I mean, I think, I think our businesses should, whether there's mandates to, they should, like, I think if you look across the street at hasty days or whatever, there is a very large, must be 20-year-old sign, you know, hopefully any other businesses would do that.
But I do think, to clarify, there is officer discretion in each of these scenarios depending on when they walk in.
Understood.
Yep. So.
If it's somebody looking around, you know, checking the place out and, I mean, again, we're going to enforce issues that we can reasonably enforce, you know, we're pretty confident we can be successful in the courthouse enforcing those issues.
If they walked in with their dad.
Right.
And they didn't know.
Well, that does bring up the, the other thing that this doesn't address and that Cassie mentioned at the podium is, I mean, you've got the classic Cornell, Cornellian is 21 and they're, you know, partner is 20 and they walk in. Or a parent and a child where the age gap might be far more dramatic. And I don't, do we want to address dads in the language or do we?
So.
Right now.
Just, I don't want to go too far.
Yeah, I think keep it simple.
Would it be appropriate to simply, the trespassion sign, the posting the age, is that something we should put in the ordinance or is that just something?
I think if you leave it this way, it's similar to a casino. Nobody under the age of 21, it doesn't matter if you're with a parent or not with your parent, you're not getting on the actual game.
Right.
The ordinance, if you just remove the language that we have tonight, whether you're with a parent or not, takes all skepticism out of it. If you're not 21, you shouldn't be in it.
Okay, I'm good with that. And I'm fine with that, it's something.
Simple is very good.
Yeah.
Simple and clean.
And it also kind of allows the business to determine what effort they're going to put to prevent that, whether it's signed.
I would tell you that, you know, from an officer's perspective, if they were to visit this, one of the establishments, and 90% of the time that they visited, they found a minor, the discretion is going to, you know, they're start, they start looking at the. You need to take more ownership of this. So there's the discretion portion of it. I would just simply strike that language. I think it accomplishes what you want and then just eliminates the 21. And there's no question then whether I am with my roommate, my parent.
And we document all those, like, it's much like doing bar checks and stuff like that. When we're, we do bar checks routinely. And so if we go in there and we're seeing issues, if we're getting called to a certain bar uptown for fights frequently, and we're seeing over-serving of people, we're having conversations with the bartenders and different things like that. And if it's, eventually we notify the owner and like, listen, clean up your bartenders, these are the issues we're seeing, and try to resolve it from that standpoint. But we document those in call details and we would be doing the same thing with this. If we have repeated issues, we're going to address them as low as we can until it's time. And then if it's time, we take enforcement action, we bring it back to the council when they, when it's time to renew their permit and say, listen, these are the issues that we've been having. We're not getting the resident, the resolve we want from the business owner. And then you get to decide whether that's something you want to approve or deny anyway.
Okay. Is there, can the state suspend or?
So we, yeah, we do tobacco compliance checks. If they, if there's a violation during that, they can lose their license for a period of time. We had a complaint on one of the establishments and the state came down, we conducted an inspection on one of them and found about $3,000, approximately $3,000 worth of prohibited items that were being sold out of one of the shops. So it's things like that, you know, there was no enforcement action yet on that one. It's just like, hey, it's an educational aspect, it's a documented thing that we've got. Here's, we're taking these, you can't sell them, they're illegal for you to have here. And the state came down and did that inspection, we assisted them with it.
So there's enough in place that we don't need to do?
No, I think it's a matter of us building a case to, you know, luckily, we've got pretty good business owners that comply or that work with us that has prevented us from bringing too many things all the way to the council level to address a license issue.
Okay. So my motion stands, strike two and change the language on ID.
And my second, so we're striking two entirely?
Not striking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Forcing two.
Right.
Can I?
Read it, please.
So two, two will say an employee, manager, or owner shall prohibit any person under the age of 21 from entering the establishment.
Yeah, so good.
And then on three, we're removing the words valid driver's license issued by a state authority and replacing with valid government-issued ID.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Catching up, Marsh, Doug, you're couple of enforcing this?
Yep, I think those are good, good clarifiers from that standpoint, so absolutely.
Got a motion on the floor for this particular ordinance, first reading here, it's moving in seconds. And I think we're ready to go to a roll call vote then.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
That ordinance passes, first reading. Moving to.
I'd like to just thank the longest call motion, as well as staff and all of the effort putting in both of these changes. I think they're important.
And.
Home aid, Paul.
Yes, and thank you. And looking through, I mean, our code's still 18 years to first tobacco. It was certainly due.
Yeah.
Second item is 10-7-2024C. This is the ADU, which is the third reading. And no further comments about it recently. No recommendations on this ordinance.
I would move approval of ordinance 10 dash 7 dash 2024C on its third reading.
Second?
Seven.
Move in second to move forth, ordinance 10-7-2024C, ADU one. And thanks to planning and zoning and everybody else that's open listening to this at this point, I think we're ready for the roll call vote, Marsh.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes, Anderson?
Yes.
That one passes, that ordinance passes. Moving to resolutions. First one is level four, 2024A, moving the financial report for fiscal year 2024.
So these first two resolutions are basically annual resolutions that we have to do for the state. The first resolution, annual financial report essentially goes back and presents the actuals to you. So obviously, when we start that fiscal year, I can say the word "guesstimate," but.
Educated.
Yeah, educated guesses at the point as far as what we're going to spend and to clarify about this actually. Has also written, discuss the revenue versus, or the tax revenues, what was actually.
I'd move resolution 11 dash 4 dash 2024A.
Thank you, Paul. Order second. Hang on, Mark. Move in second to move forth, level four, 2024A, moving the financial report for fiscal year 2024. And that is also a roll call vote.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
That resolution passes, staying in the area of finances, Department of Transportation's Street Financial Report for fiscal year 2024.
And in this one, the O P requires us to show where Grover's Tax Fund was being spent within the city for each fiscal year.
For the report, it's still in there.
I will move to approve resolution 11 dash 4 dash 2024, approving the Department of Transportation's Street Finance Report for fiscal year 2024.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank Scott on that one. Stephanie and Scott, move in second to move forth, level four, 2024B, Department of Transportation's Street Financial Report. And that is also a roll call vote, Marsh.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes.
Thanks again to staff tracking everything that we do financially is not an easy task, so thank you.
Resolution three is a win on the LBC generator project.
Yeah.
People working on the construction bid for the generator installation project. Good idea to rebid that.
Amazing.
Thank you, Hawkeye.
Change $200,000.
Is this done with estimators are on vacation?
Yes.
It's like a week long or something.
To be fair, there were a couple of minor modifications to the bid documents, but I don't think there were $200,000 worth of modifications made. So B and K is recommending Hawkeye Electric Contractors, their bid amount was $101,462. I believe the engineer's estimate was $225,000. So great bid. $100,000 of this is coming from the ramp and the ADU is coming from this.
And to clarify, this would, this isn't just so that folks can use the treadmill with the power from now. It's about the LBC. In shelter in storm scenarios.
In light of the derecho, when every community and county was hit and resources were scarce, it was determined that we were quite lucky that Cornell was not in session at the time. So thankfully it happened during COVID, much to do with it. If we be running to a scenario where Cornell is actually in session, they do not have a generator on campus. So having a place that at least houses, keeps and cool is imperative. As a matter of fact, not the equipment, it could be running while, while it's at the time. It's not, it's not a generator that is going to be able to keep up with 200 people and then everything else that's going on in the building, but it will keep, keep the energy machine running.
So we would have the LBC on that side of town, we'd have City Hall here.
They would give us a generator in every public facility that we have.
Yep.
That LBC was the last.
Yep.
So Chris, under that scenario, how many people could be housed at max?
At max? Well, thankfully in the last scenario, the occupancy goes out the window.
Okay.
I want to say between 150 and 200 people are allowed in the LBC for short periods of time. If we had to establish COGS, it would diminish the capacity if we were just simply getting people in there, to house them overnight without beds and things like that, then we could get probably 150 to 200. But I think that's, ideally, not, without going into the plan, that would be kind of the warming cooling station. Generally, what would be there would be students or the populace that just needed a place to go and warm up or cool down. This building is utilized for individuals that require monitoring, so during the derecho, individuals that had CPAP machines and other things were located at this facility. So we, we would spread them kind of throughout. But ideally, I mean, doesn't have air conditioning in it, but our generator will move to the public works site too, so we can keep people inside a building and keep it somewhat temperature-controlled. We're not gonna, we don't have enough for the entire community, like 4,000, 5,000 people would get significantly higher than what it was.
Glad to see this.
When you were talking about the, does that, does the public school system have generators? But in terms of the entire population, one of the things, I know a fair amount of people have over the years, especially after the derecho, spent money on generators. So hopefully, we would never be in a situation to have to house everyone. It's interesting, I'm surprised that Cornell doesn't have one.
So, and it really boils down to cost, how many, what is the capacity that a generator has to kick out in order to keep people? So to be fair, my biggest fear and the reason I pushed hard for the generator at the LBC is not actually the summer months. It's the ice storms.
Yeah.
Those are the most concerning to me. And again, just getting people inside and keeping them warm in a prolonged period. So I think we'll be okay. In the instance that we had a disaster of that nature, unless it affected, you know, half the state of Iowa, they do make generators that are mobile and can be picked up. The derecho, unfortunately, like I said, was so widespread that resources were lost initially.
Well, having said all of that, I would move approval of resolution 11 dash 4 dash 2024C, approving the bid with Hawkeye Electric for installation of LBC generator in a total of $194,462.
John Mark, move in second. Add Chris's comments, this is probably a. Add Chris's comments. This is probably a major, a prime example of the city engaging with the college on a very important emergency management contingency here. So thank you for stepping up, City of Mount Vernon. Motion on the floor, resolution on the floor to approve, um, eleven four twenty twenty four C. I think we're ready to vote on that. Marsha.
Anderson.
Yes.
Torel.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Moving on to the Platte survey twenty seventy-nine, City of Mount Vernon, Public Works Area.
So this plaque is for parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A is a small triangular piece in what would be the southwest corner. Obviously, the longest rectangle that is currently a public works site. That is the portion that I wanted to maintain and keep with Davis Park. Parcel B is what would be the remainder of the public, the current public works facility. So the, the reason behind this is, um, the creation of legal description on parcel B because we do intend, um, to put that property up for sale. And, um, I needed a valid legal description in order to make that happen. And I know it gets kind of crazy, but if you look at the plaque, you can see there's, nonetheless, the two or three different old highways that don't exist. There's no Ash Street that goes through there. There's no Oak Street that goes through there. So this was supposed to be a very simple retracement survey so that we could get a legal description turned into a three-month fiasco trying to trace back, um, all of this property on the road.
It's the next step in the long process to make conversion Brian Road Site. Step at a time, whatever needs to happen and. Getting it to this point with that last survey. Any questions to staff about that or? Motion.
I will go ahead and move forward with resolution eleven four twenty twenty four D, approving the plaque of survey number twenty-eight seventy-nine to the City of Mount Vernon and in County.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Paul. Moving second to move forth, uh, eleven four twenty twenty four D. If there are no further questions, turn over Marsha.
Rose.
Yes.
Torel.
Yes.
West. Yes, Anderson.
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on, level four twenty twenty four E, special access agreement, part of North Palm Vernon. Rest of the legal description on there.
So I've never, I've never seen the surveyor kind of throw up his hands when putting something together. But, um, he pretty much did with this and came back to me. So this odd shape is actually the drive access that goes back to the, the current public works site. It's the only access back there. Um, and the thought was that we would sell that, that access drive back to it. But as you can see, it, it covers almost four different lots, again, right away, that doesn't necessarily exist. And he basically came back and just asked, can you just give us the special amusement across that, um, property and not sell it? So the city would maintain ownership. We would just grant us to our current public works site, Gordon Munder. All the individuals that are currently utilizing that, that area.
So is that area openly in parking lot of the pool?
Oh, yeah.
Am I looking at that right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is chaos.
Yeah.
I can barely remember what's up.
The former Pine Street.
You can imagine.
Former Pine Street that was not Pine Street is actually where the parking lot is.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So it's like thirty-four, the bathhouse, basically, just to kind of give yourself some sense of where we're.
It probably crosses thirty-four and part of the, the right away as well, but yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Hello, men. So special access agreements. Clearing this up, uh, as I motion to approve, approve, move to approve resolution number eleven four dash twenty twenty four E. So surveyors don't have to throw their hands. The reason there is all, all Stephanie. Moving, moving second to move forth on a special access agreement. The V K U fifty. And if we're ready to vote on that, you know, for the questions, Marsha, are you ready to call your own?
Rose.
Yes.
West. Yes, Anderson.
Yes.
Torel.
Yes. The resolution passes. Moving on, there are no mayoral proclamations or old business. Moving the motions for approval. We received a claims list, a new claims list this afternoon. Any questions with staff? Move forth with that. Moving for one of the claims lists to present. Call and, and Stephanie.
Second.
Okay. Moving second to approve the most recent claims list from this afternoon. No questions. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion considerations spring over the next invoice, public works site construction. This is the next one.
Eight thousand six hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Um, yeah. Thankfully, most of the concrete work is now done. The hoop structure is up. I don't want to steal all of Ellen's thunder because I guarantee there'll be plenty of pictures at your next meeting. So, um, it is quite a sight. You are welcome to, to go out there. We call it open in advance, just to make sure there's not anything going on. But.
You can get good view, Rick, from Brian.
You can. You very much.
You're a risk up there.
The, uh, building package for the mezzanine, did that come today or did it come tomorrow?
What's that?
Mezzanine.
Uh, all that stuff was delivered today after lunch.
Yep. So.
And it's done, right?
No, but the guys aren't happy to not have to work on the factory anymore.
I bet. Is all the concrete work done out there? Both floors?
All the structural stuff, but we have to add a little, just a little piece on the front side of the salt shank, the hoop structure.
The pad.
But other than that, yeah, we're, all the floors and footing and walls and.
Eventually, we would like to, where you see the buildings around both of those buildings, we'll all be partried at some point. But we don't necessarily have to have it done here now.
Chris, I'm assuming that these two, number two and number three are courtesy to us since they're under ten thousand.
Um, yes. So as I said before, I will bring you the invoices. Number one, it helps me to keep everybody in the loop about what's going on. I know that those, um, we said we have three days to, to pay these invoices anyway. So actually, two, three, four, and five, um, technically are all invoices that I could approve. But, um, it just makes for.
No, I, I appreciate it because we see the progress, even though it's work that we had already approved.
Yeah, gives us a chance to kind of describe each of these projects.
Yes. Understood.
I appreciate that.
Um, I will move to approve the Springville Red Mix invoice number seven nine five eight seven for the public works site.
Thank you, Stephanie and Scott. Moving second to move forth, uh, the next invoice to Springville Red Mix, Public Works Site. If there are any questions with staff, all who give that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sounds like Brian Rhodes mean, um, another V and K invoice here. One big improvements.
Yeah, these are all, you can cap it on the, the services, but all three are for existing projects. I'm not the type of chance to, to, to go down by four.
It's very nice.
It's a dream.
It does look great.
Access to your driveway now, outside. Yeah, I can't wait for my, um, five-year-old grandson to ride his bike and go, I'm about to rub his face. He, he thinks I was able to do that. They credit for it. As long as, as long as they have that quibble in there, I'm going to take advantage. So with that said, I, uh, move to approve VK invoice number five one three seven six dash one. Thank you, Paul. Second. Mark. Moving second is to move forward, uh, the VK invoice of the Brian Road. I rather, um, VK invoice, I should say. Um, if we're ready to vote on that, all who give that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we are on VK for Glen Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I would move approval of the VK invoice, uh, five one three seven two dash four.
Scott.
All second.
Good second. Anything, anything to board on Glen Street other than the curb?
So Minus has been board, um, if, if not Glen, um, it will send out others. Didn't make that note, but there's one that I have to work outside of hours because the modern age is finally giving us rain.
So end this in the west side of.
East and west.
It's the east west. From Minish to, uh, one.
Existing one.
Or, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That is off.
Yep.
I move approval of invoice number five one three five nine dash two. Is there a second? Can we put on?
Brian, previous one.
So, so four, guy. Five one three seven two.
Yeah. Sorry, no, that one was moved in second, I think.
Yeah, Scott, Stephanie on that one. So I think we're ready to vote on that one. Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one, Fourth Street. I.
There you go, there's now.
Dash two.
Go, go, go.
Bowing.
Give your grants on the ins and outs on, uh, you know. Robert's rules of order, right?
Haven't grown up on that street. I'll think I can do.
Are there, are there any votes going on?
Not yet.
So that's, let's grab a vote, everybody.
That's okay.
Okay. Uh, let's move to second to move forth, um, VK invoice on the Fourth Street Northwest Construction Project. And if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item for approval for motion is change order number one on the pool improvements. On the council, actually, doesn't need it.
So change order number one is actually five changes handling. Um, the total dollar amount is one hundred and sixty-five thousand, twenty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. It includes, um, Lynn County Building Permit, the full deck replacement that we discussed. The current electrical panel actually faces a wrong direction and is rusted out. So we have them put, gives it more room. So if you can imagine, here's the panel, here's the pit, um, for the pool. So all the overflow comes into this pit. You have to maneuver around the pit and treat pipes in order to get to the panel. And the panels have started rusting out, so.
It's pretty sketchy.
Yeah.
If we're able to have them to, to turn that around and give us access to the panel and replace the panels themselves. Damned to the, the pool basin, those were the areas that had started to, start to, to get loose. They.
It was worse than we thought.
Yeah, they, they cut those sections out and repaired.
Basically, all the joints.
Yeah. And then, um. I, I can't think of it for this one, the in pool lighting. Laurie was trying to make sure that this change order got in there. And, and, and truthfully, as many night, night things that we do at the pool, there were blind lights.
Yeah.
Now, I will tell you, um, that the in pool lighting is not necessarily a code requirement. The overhead lighting is what's going to be required by code. We're going to have those. So you'll see a change order for some more overhead lighting as well. But given our, the shape of the pool, there were dark spaces. And I think it was only going to get worse with the, the slides that were going to be there. So, uh, five, I want to say five new indoor or in pool lights, and then there'll be some additional overhead lights. I won't tell them, but this was all kind of expected. If I can get through the next couple of weeks without any major changes, I'm going to shift focus to a portion of the product, the two buildings that weren't necessarily part of the original project. But I'd love to get some other things done with them. Just still, we just in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, for context, we had bonded two million. We'd bid one and a half.
Yep.
And so this, you know, one sixty, or a hundred and sixty-five thousand, while not an insignificant amount. And it turns out, getting a hole near a fifty-year-old pool, you're going to have some significant deals.
These were the kind of.
When you know.
What we were, yeah, assuming.
Just to give you some context to this.
But regardless, I appreciate that you moved the decisions along because that timeline is important.
There's a, a coating, um, that's imperative. We're concrete, probably all the way in December. But there's a coating on the basin that needs to be done. And I just want to make or break on what we have open.
Yeah.
On time. Um, so if anybody's crank crank this out. At least for the next couple of weeks.
Well, I will move to approve a change order number one of the twenty twenty four pool improvements.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All second.
And Scott. What percent of the pad is poor, even if you say, I know we started on the west, but they're moving.
So far, the deck.
Yeah, that.
Uh, probably fifteen.
Fifteen, but they, uh.
But it's got some nice leaf stamps in it.
Motion for.
They will, though.
Motion for the floor to consider change order number one on the pool improvement project. And if there are no further questions with staff, are we ready to vote on that? With all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, fourth discussion items, um, mayor's report. I mentioned two things, Mr. Roll, um, cut out to a, a resident, a role here for making the, uh. The sand for Buckeye. I'm not sure I'm pronouncing it right, but cream is Alexander.
Pacheco.
Pretty neat article in the Sun here and, uh, it said, I, I know these people, I know them. Congratulations and, and for buying local and supporting local big time.
Yes.
Last item on my report is, uh, vote tomorrow, which is what everybody is actually getting ready for here. Any other council reports? Um, tomorrow would normally be a Cornell, city, school, lunch meeting. But that's not happening. We did the volleyball. Got that in the new schedule.
I am with, like I said, I know who jumped in, with Matt and Eldon did, uh, take a look at the parks. But that was great. Have it done. I think they're going to finish it off next week. So, uh, yeah, that was good to see, get out there and see what really needs to get done. And then also I told Matt it would last a little bit. When I was in there today, they've got a bunch of video games set up in that extra room. So I don't know. I asked him to maybe talk about it a little bit more because I don't know that much, so.
I'll just keep it brief, but, um, we have after-school clubs and one of them is esports program. It's been very popular. It's actually maxed out every time we've offered it with sixteen kids. We have seven video game units that we're operating in this room. Um, sixteen kids come every Monday from three-thirty to four-forty-five and just safe environment, play video games against each other and with each other. So it's, uh, pretty cool to see. And then we also have art and Lego stem and P E games are our four after-school clubs right now that are offered, so.
Excellent. Thank you. I would like to mention that the Community Development Group has an open position for a social media manager that they have just posted. So if anyone is interested in applying, go to visit m d l dot com. Or is it dot org? I feel like. Regardless, visit M D L.
Thank you, Diana Wilson, for filling in that role to start out with.
She did a great job.
I think it's dot com.
It is dot com.
I think it got switched. That's why it's.
Yeah, that's really recent to thank you, Dana, for doing that.
Yep.
What's the administrative report? Hasn't I asked about, um, numbers on one of your budget? What's the else?
So, um, as of today's meeting, we are down to about two hundred and twenty meters. Individuals that haven't made their initial appointment. This week, staff, city staff will be putting door hangers on those two hundred and twenty. Kind of as a final reminder. So as I explained to the mayor, understand that Ferguson's contract is dates. They're not contracted to change all the meters. So if they get to the holidays, Thanksgiving holiday, and you still have non-compliant individuals, the city will be installing. So if they get to the holidays, Thanksgiving holiday, and you still have non-compliant individuals, the city will be installing those meters. So we are going to put door hangers on. It is an expectation. But this, this language will be a little harsh. So if you do get phone calls. The only responses that I received from the slats kind of go around are for some individuals that either had their appointment canceled or they had to come back and they got the notice they're a little upset about the harsh language that way. But moving forward, it can be a fee that you'll pay monthly. It could be a fine or we could theoretically shut water off until the meter is replaced. So the slats one, like I said, would be very strong.
I will say that I felt like the experience was very smooth. The communication via text was great about reminders. The gentleman who came to the house was very polite. It was, it was a really good experience.
Out of the eleven hundred that have been replaced so far, I would say probably less than two percent have had complaints on. So, I mean, those are good numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how did the results of the lead testing come out?
There will be a letter that goes out within the next two weeks to individuals that it was either inconclusive and likely that they had lead based were required by the federal law to notify homeowners that they will have, that they have. For us to believe to lead, because we're not physically testing the lines. But it is to identify that they have that. It is going to be on the homeowner, so we're not necessarily actively forcing them to do a lot of plumbing work in their home. But this to at least let them know that it exists and whether or not they would like to do additional testing or go to get some of those lines replaced, that will be to get up to them.
Thank you.
Unless they change a lot.
Another change in this process is that the building will change from the previous measure to gallons, I remember it from.
Yes, so.
Could we feed in gallons?
With this. We want to say gallons because that's what people have. Like you, it's pretty difficult to describe and then if we do like to do the calculation.
Thank you. How many reports this time? Anything else that needs to come before this council meeting? Otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.